And for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, our greatest state, a nation like God, indivisible, with other things and justice. Thank you for those who came this evening and at this time all in our hand.
Here, here.
Thank you. Next is a vision statement of a looking to something to work on.
I'm gonna forego the vision statement tonight and just ask our community. I'm gonna give a prayer for the Ralph family, for our entire community. What an amazing, bright light Dallas is being. Was always willing to do anything and there were so many people that are affected by this tragedy and love this family. It extends to our school family deeply and I just want to remember them today and coming days and weeks ahead. When you think of them as for a prayer and I'm just thankful that we're a community that cares and I know that they will be surrounded by love and hold your loved ones close and remember to say the things that you want to say. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the group of the minutes from June meeting and flights personnel, new employees and transition from hourly to contract.
So we don't have anything specific tonight to pull out of personnel. If there's anything you have questions about the claims or anything personnel, we're happy to answer those. Otherwise it makes sense. Agenda could go as a whole. The board wishes.
Take a motion to approve the consent agenda that's presented.
The motion is second and a third to approve the consent agenda that's presented. You ready?
Yeah.
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 Motion is carried. Next is a report. So first is facilities and construction update.
Don't you come up?
Yep.
All right, probably most of you walked around, seen the bathroom completed, put that down. These are colleagues, they completed our project. The commons essentially the maintenance part of it's completed. We have some painting graphics that's gonna go on there. Jason can attest to what's happened there. Had some flooring that got completed down the middle school elementary, the cafeteria. There was something we really noticed. Some of the expansion joints were breaking up in the tile. Those were repaired. Cafeterias, middle school science rooms. There was a classroom that was really bad and it got repaired. The asphalt from when we had the leak this winter, we did that. We also got, there's a couple spots on boulevards that need some attention and we got that same time. The elementary, middle school, the roof is about a year or two out of warranty. So we started to do some inspections on that. There were some spots that we need to address. So we approved a little bit of roof repair for that. And over time, we'll probably just have to do each section and just inspect it and a little bit of roof repair to make sure that doesn't leak as we go forward.
You say we're a year or two away from the end of warranty or past the?
Past, okay. I believe it was a fifteen year. As I understand, our rent came chilled up. So this was what made, he thought it was fifteen year and now it's, I think, two years old, around there. The tennis pavilion, seeing that and right there by the auto shop that has been started. Jason will probably give you a few details on that. Most of my stuff, that's it. Unless you want me to talk about the project that's got started or you want me to wait till on business?
That's up to the board. We can jump ahead and include project updates right now when you're up here. You don't have to back up.
So we started that. Michelle and I have kind of navigated through some things to try to keep it on schedule and moving forward.
Well, I'm gonna, he's being modest a little bit. So as we had our kickoff construction meeting, ACB did a great job of bringing every, so everybody who's gonna be working, we were really thankful to have that kind of kickoff. And looking at prints and just looking at everything, Jason just wondered about a few things. Could be this, could be that. Seems like this after looking and they literally left the room, went and looked at some things and came back, looked at the prints. And within that meeting, that was about two and a half hours total, we were able to navigate away from Tyler Tang's room and not have to touch that to go under into concrete, which was a huge, glorious. As we were speaking, navigating like who's gonna go, what are we gonna do in case we need this time? So that was great news in and of itself. And then they were immediately coming back the next day to look at some things a little deeper with some different lenses, I would say. I'm not an expert in that. And Jason had another idea. And they were able to navigate his thoughts using ground penetrating radar, GPR. And based on what Jason was saying about cleanouts and where this connects, now we have a very clear, unobtrusive, if you will, when you're cutting concrete out, I mean, path through doorways without having to go under walls and take out cabinetry and just a much smoother path to outside just made way more sense. And the team-
Made our target thing
Way easier to-
Yeah.
So you guys, we can take a walk afterwards and take a look at that area. It looks very different than what the original plan showed. So and just come, keeping in contact with them all the time. They are, one of the questions that came up was will they do demo in the bathrooms the same time that they're doing, and they are. They're demoing, so that's gonna save time on the other end. And they put a nice enclosure with a little door to get in and out of the construction area for the bathroom. So that's, we worried about how that would be for kids and it's not gonna be an issue at all. So going along very, very well.
Very pleased. We had a much easier way to get there, but why was that not suggested by the people designing this?
Because the, you jumped in and I remember on the, the prints were, are the scroll. I call it the scroll. The old, they were still the old build and they had those, but if you didn't, and they were electronic. But if you didn't have that in front of you, it was very hard to see what Jason was showing them.
And they, I believe they couldn't. So we had our original, we had some renovation. They couldn't, yeah, they couldn't put that together to see.
And nobody provided that as we did projects, like because the original was painting how we, and then when we did that adjustment, it never, they, they never, the two went together.
And they, in the architect's view, they still felt that they needed to come down the five foot of where the main was and go back and catch this plumbing where all that plumbing inside the science rooms has been replaced. All they need to come really is off of that. A couple items that are outside of science area.
You know, the biggest need?
Don't have to, right now, the way we have it, they can start fresh. To start the fall from fresh from where we changed a few things and go through the doorways. Plenty of fall make back.
They could potentially. I mean, they said that to us. This could even cost you less, but, but we did. We, what we didn't have in there is the sink in the library. We were re, just leaving it, reattaching. But with doing this, we do have to move the sink, so that'll be an additional cost to put the new sink band in the area. It's right behind the-
We should do a savings from not taking out the, they wanted to take the whole wall out. They want to take cabinetry out, so they should have saved on that. So there shouldn't be a disaster.
They'll go sink in if that's up your step.
No, they're-
They don't, they'll go.
Yeah. And they were meeting, regular construction meeting, so we'll go through that. And then not, we're not gonna get, we won't, we don't know enough to get into this tonight, but looking at the abandoned hallway options for that, that we said that maybe go a different way so it doesn't keep here. And so they're just very responsive.
Going forward, that's just as bad as wrestling, it's, it kind of works out there.
So all good news so far.
Where do you have a tennis court?
We have a meeting Thursday after our construction meeting with the team because that we have to rattle, it needs to be addressed by.
The candle, right?
Well-
Well, I think part of us, our heart attack, wanna step down and the other ones have been placed. So I think when I have a reverb meeting-
With the owner at the time, then yeah. Our biggest vote we have right now, so. But if, if this doesn't get someplace, Tim Baker is on. I mean, he's ready to jump in if you need him to. The nice thing is it doesn't stop them from playing tennis. And we told them, you're not gonna come during tennis season to fix it because we're not gonna take away tennis season. It's gonna, so stay tuned.
Yeah. Any questions?
Okay.
All right.
We'll jump to Jason and talk about, so the commons improvements. We have, over the last few years, had a list of things that we've all talked about depending on the remaining money, interest money in our two projects. One of those, as I look at this list, we've almost accomplished most everything. One of them is playgrounds are a theme. Flex the glass above the pool. I mean, all kinds of just projects that we met with the attorneys that were site improvement projects that, that under site improvements. So Jason's been working for about two and a half years, I'd say.
I went back and checked emails. My first email was in February of 2022. So we are a little, a little over about three years now and I've been kind of, you know, anticipating being able to get some stuff moving with the different areas we're looking at.
So we are, we have been inquiring about a comprehensive pool, gym, commons hallway area. But when, as we wind down our projects, we're prioritizing the areas. And the area that's prioritized right now is the commons and the gym entry. Because the commons have many holes in walls, areas that needed to be structurally fixed. And so while we were doing the ceiling tiles and the lighting project, that same group did all the wall repairs and prepped the walls for improvement. So that's where, that's not the only reason. The commons is also where more people are spending more time. So I'll let Jason share with you. We have a copy. And if anybody else wants a copy to look at, I'll help bring them around.
Yeah, like I said, I've been waiting a while for this one, kind of going back to 2022 and kind of seeing, you know, all the different things that were done. To the facility, to the building and noticing, you know, the pool and the gym and the commons were in this area too. Whether it's, you know, the peeling paint that was in the pool that's on the walls or if you go to the gym, we have areas in the upper walls that are peeling there and that are just, you know, dirty and kind of scuffed. Kind of started as a painting project more than anything. We're also kind of running into some issues with, if you're familiar with the gym, the yellow banners that get hanging on the wall of the gym. You know, in the last eight to 10 years, we've had a lot of success athletically, which is a good thing. But those banners are not very easy to get up to, to take down, to bring down, to update, to get back up. And so Dave, at that time, had also asked me to start to try to find a new way where we can display those type of things. And that's kind of where, you know, this is coming from and why this project kind of started in 2022. But anyway, like Michelle said, the commons is gonna kind of be phase one right now, especially with school starting up pretty soon and getting that stuff done before, you know, kids get back in here and start using the commons for, you know, study hall spaces and meeting spaces and so forth. And then hopefully as that gets accomplished, we can move on to the gym and move on to the pool also. What we have in front of you, we just received this morning, this is a pretty, you know, kind of rough draft of first ideas of what Chris has had as he's been in our building. So I don't want to really say this is kind of a final copy or hey, this is what we are doing. But this is the first kind of rendering that we've really gotten for the space for the commons area. And then working that from the commons area into the gym entrance right outside of the athletic office and then eventually into the gym. And then like I said, hopefully into the pool also, kind of, you know, updating those spaces.
I do want to inject, because this was, you know, back right away in the conversation, what's not shown in here. There's an F A space, there's a, I mean, it's in the wording in here, it says it, but it doesn't show the pictures. I guess because he was trying to get us something that we could-
Trying to get something for tonight where we kind of visualize and see. So like I said, definitely not, you know, kind of the final draft, but different ideas of, you know, as a, as a, excuse me, a designer and an artist and somebody who does this stuff for a living, you know, the direction that he would potentially take these spaces to. You know, tie the commons area into the hallway and then tie that into the gym and make everything flow and match and work together.
And part of this project, part of I dis involvement in this project was Belmont, Adam Central, Bluffton, all use the same vendor. So she reached out to them and to see what they got, the cost, so that we could make sure as we're monitoring this cost. We know that this was of all the vendors we reached out to, the most for your money. So we did three, four quotes. But we also wanted to see from people who've done it. So all of the schools, Blackford was another we looked at. So the pricing estimate here is better, it definitely in line, it's not better than what the other schools do. And the other thing I want to make sure that you know from the beginning, that I thought was so impressive about Jason's ideas. Idea, just I'll say it as an idea, was if you see where it says Hartford Gorillas and the Burnt Bears. So the four townships that came together are listed on it in our gym. There are four pillars that hold up our gym, if you don't have a look in that corner. So from the beginning, Jason's ideas to every brander, if you will, was we want those pillars to represent each of the townships that be shown. So that theme was carried out into here. So you only see two of the townships, but the other bricks have the other two. Try, they're trying to put them in the area where they are. That's not 100% possible. So that's why you see those here, but there may be all four of them in there. And that same theme we carry into the gym. Because they're like the, the pillars that built them, so.
It was, we had not thought, you know, as we looked at the different signage and things that are in the gym, you know, about, you know, how to use specifically the four that are up there now. And as Chris came here, he met with us on Wednesday to kind of go over some of these things again. It was just something that, you know, kind of popped into the ideas. We've had some things inside of the stardom, but not inside of the commons of how we could do that. I thought that was a really neat way to bring those into the building part of it too, for people who don't necessarily go into the gym. When you go into the building, you can see that also. Like Michelle said, I brought three different companies in, kind of look at different things and definitely feel this group is by far the best out of the three. Like she said, Adam Central, Belmont, Bluffton, Monroe Central and Blackford have all used this company. So as I go to the different games that are on our schedule for basketball and so forth, I mean, I've been using gyms, I've seen their stuff. They're good. They definitely do a good job and I'll look at the quotes that we've received from them. They were also by far, you know, most personable, got us the best service. They've been here multiple times. The other ones have only come in on Zoom meetings. They didn't really want to put the effort into it because of where we were in the project. The other company just did not impress me very much at all. So I definitely think these guys are the ones we've talked to are the best.
And the point of bringing it to you tonight in this format, which was important to get from him, is that it's not a, it's not a final project product, but we wanted him to include as much as possible so you could see the cost involved. And the cost is, it's been budgeted in the interest, but it's still a costly thing. That's why we're not committed. We're phasing it in and he will give us renderings for the gym, renderings for the pool area. The pool area has to be painted anyway. That's been on the agenda. It's happening anyway, so. But wanted your approval to continue to move forward with this tonight with full transparency that it is at large cost. The other districts, all in just their gyms were in, and I guess there were some other areas with some of them in the over a hundred thousand dollar range. So, and he's, yeah, he knows that we do it a little slower than the other places.
Will it be signage for new bathrooms?
Yes.
Yeah, we've talked about-
Is it in there that says a bathroom project?
We put the signage in this. We do not put it in the other project because we wanted to find out. And there's other areas that need signage too. So we talked about where else that would be. And he's kind of giving us an evaluation. He's doing that evaluation for three or four other districts right now.
We talked about exterior signage and, you know, interior signage also, yeah.
And if you look like the, definitely the music hallway is on this list, but the music hallway looks great. All the things, you know, it looks, there's so much more to do in the branding way with pictures for that. So you see a little bit of a different, we asked him for a different font, so we're called, we're called our autotory and make it look a little different. Because most of that branding is gonna flow down their hallway. It's gonna be in a different area. But we still wanted it to be a little offset because the music people use, that's where they hang out after their music.
Can we help you out budget for this?
About a hundred.
I will say one thing regarding that is walking in and see the fonts, I just know.
Well, and that's just, that was just us saying, can we set it apart? Because it's music, this seems to be so with all of our trophy cases. But that, that's, I mean, if you, if, if Jason's kind of on your team with that.
I'm very much-
Like even the signage outside, like why are there two or three fonts on the sign?
We do.
I'm in your book.
We've had the whole-
Signs, logos, stuff.
I would just like music a little.
If you want that to stand out.
Yeah.
Maybe the, there would be music in the tree instead of a honeycomb.
That, we, we suggested that. He, and his only thing was, you know, that, that, people do that, it's great. We even had some images like that. His point was it, it will, people will say, why doesn't my picture up? Or it has to change often and it is an expense to cover-
I mean, not, not people's pictures, it's like music instruments, notes, those sort of things.
That was kind of how I envisioned it, like something like that.
Yeah, we, we talked like in generalities about, you know, doing different things to the doors, painting the doors, wrapping the doors. And this is what it came back with. I think the honeycombs is kind of just, you know,
He recommends uniformity.
Yeah, because like I say, it kind of ties everything and, and if you look at them, I think that's the very last page that has the stardom doors and the, you know, the lettering across it and the honeycomb is kind of carried all the way through there.
The other thing this includes, if you can see where the trophy cases are black on the outside. It includes the price of painting that wood and offsetting all of the trophy cases instead of replacing the material, painting it. And he has a, I said, Lord, do you want to stay? He said he has a special contract they use to paint that, so he wouldn't have to replace trophy cases.
Lives in the door. And wraps? How are those holding up?
We have wraps.
We, we have wraps out on the bathrooms for the exterior that we've had now for
They're not whole or entire wraps, correct?
They go through the top, bottom of the door, yeah. They're on both concession stand bathrooms of football and at the soccer softball ones. And they throw up great, yeah.
And they're out- They're just painted.
No, those are wraps.
And they're outdoor too, so.
So they've done very well.
I know those aren't probably as, probably as well used as what they would be in the building. I just, you know, they're gonna be around kids a lot more. It's gonna be scuffed and-
I was worried about those being exterior ones and fading and, you know, getting hit by a rock as a mower, you know, throw something at it and chip it. And you don't really see that very much with those. They throw up pretty well.
Do they stand behind some of the stuff for a little while?
Uh, we have not had any, you know, discussions as far as-
I don't see it on here though.
Most type of things. I don't, I don't have a problem with the project as a whole. I'm just not liking much of their work and saying, oh, it's the candles. And you said they just threw it together, so it's gonna go down.
The starfire doors were, that was new to us, but we all thought, and then we went in simplicity on the other wall that you see. So- I thought it was time.
Those things, it's like one of her, that's one of those ones.
Oh, that's our team pictures. We already have those. And so Jason wanted to continue to have-
So those are all the pictures. So those are the team photos, you know, kind of highlighting.
A lot of schools will do a Hall of Fame that way, but we have our-
This will, so, you know, every year we update it. So when, you know, when we have our Fall Team Picture Day, you know, once we get those back from Gibby's, then those will go into their slots and same thing for winter team pictures and spring team pictures. It's just kind of updating what we have.
It kind of looks like just like a goofy artwork there, doesn't it?
Yeah.
We haven't seen the honeycomb till today.
Yeah, that was the first.
I have a little bit much of an idea to look at possibly, just from our business aspect. I had some people say this, have you ever looked at, put like branding a little bit like electronic sign out by the highway?
Yes.
In our business, you would not believe how many people read our sign. I mean, we're on a county road even. How many people will call in about something we have on their sign? And maybe it increases attendance.
And I can remember, I'm starting to show age here, I don't even remember how long it, but this wasn't even work. But having discussions about a sign, but where would we put it? Would we put it out here on Parkway Street or on 27, trying to?
Yeah, they actually talked about, we talked about a sign like straight out from the elementary fifth grade wing, right there. And, and then that same vendor could put one there, put one here and put one here. So it's been talked about, but honestly, I have said, you know, that's an extra thing we just don't need right now. But it is, there's not anybody looking for it.
I'm just saying it's something that we've seen with just advertising in our business, you might, people might go.
There was some issue.
There was. We didn't, whatever it was, it was a no. Corey, what were you gonna say?
That's what I was just about to say. My second year here, Dave Borges investigated it and found there was some sort of either a structural issue or something that was prohibitive to us putting it by 27 and I think even out here on Parkway.
It would have to be in progress.
Johnson Junction in the way.
So, but we are happy to look into that, but again, that was, yeah.
And then whether you can even get this a bit to do it because it's a federal highway.
And our outside signage, you know, we talked about Jason, we're like that now. We definitely need some improvement in our outside signage, whether it's even just directional signage, just, it is a very confusing and what we have is not adequate.
I don't know if we have a swim meet where somebody from the other school doesn't come up here and like, I have no idea how to get to your pool. It took me so long to try to find this. Actually, there needs to be some, some areas there too.
But we just wanted this, you know, it was a lot of work for him to get it to this point so you could see it, so you understood the money set aside. But looking at this, moving forward, just approving so we can engage with him to get actually some things done. And it's in the reports, but would like you to move forward with it. And Jason will be happy to update as, and Corey, as they tweak the plan.
I'm gonna ask this, but was there ever discussion painting the brick? It's so bad, I'm sorry.
He wants you to paint the brick. We said, well, no.
I like the brick.
Honestly, the brick looks really bad with black and gold. It just looks dark, maybe not as inviting.
It's going to make that room go a lot lower with all the black at the top.
Well, that's what.
We, we had that conversation today as well. We said this came in at 11:09.
But I think the lights are so bright. Yeah, they kind of don't do lots. I don't think it will.
They dimble.
They can be.
They're not. Put a permanent dimmer up in the ceiling. I would think it would go so right.
I can have a questionable about painting the brick because when that starts peeling in 20 years or whatever, then what are you going to do?
Well, that's why they use what's called an adhesion primer. I've seen that before where people just paint brick, but they don't use adhesion primer and it just peels right off.
I feel like we're no for our brick. I feel like we're no for our brick. It's almost ingrained in everything.
You wanted the brick painted black.
Yeah. I probably like it because we have, you know, the brick is in the hallway.
Just, you know, it's every.
It's a baseball field, it's outside of the place.
Yeah. And somebody made the decision to even as an add-on, when we did do some improvements, to leave the existing brick and just put windows. I mean, they used the brick and it, you know, Corey.
Brick is honestly the most common theming we have on a campus. We don't have fonts that match. We don't have yellows that match. Bricks do match.
Even with the multi-function, it's the brick.
One thing I kind of wondered, I've always thought about in that entryway, when you walk in, in that section that kind of goes into the commons and divided. If we could have like a glass etched kind of doors that would open if needed, you know, that would just slide. And then they could put star fires and put, I guess, imagery on it.
Yeah, we, you know, so there, it didn't get included in, and this was Chris, even though I told him we have it, hasn't incorporated it in there yet. But when you look at, you know, he has, it's the very last page, so on the bottom right hand. Picture, there's the essay with the star logo, not necessarily the one I envisioned it doing, but that'll be, you know, kind of the block essay logo that athletics has kind of adopted. But that'll be a backlit sign. And then I purchased a 55 inch monitor. Which the goal is to then put up there and basically start to fill that with, you know, past, present and future pictures of just our campus and athletics. And basically use it as a digital picture frame. You know, I know a lot of people have those in their ounces now where you download the images to it that just kind of scrolls along with your pictures. And, you know, that's kind of hopefully the plan for what that wall will become there in that part of it and, you know.
Some schools have gone away from a Hall of Fame to a digital Hall of Fame. You can pick the year or you can. We're operating for that.
Yeah, and that's a direction I'd like to have, have gone with some of these projects, but like Michelle said, that's. I have a lot of different companies for, for that also, but that's another day. Where they'll digitize all your yearbooks and download your yearbooks into it. And you can walk up, it's a whole touchscreen interactive unit. You can click that, it can go to athletics and, you know, you could touch a team and their information could come up. You know, you could include.
Search a person.
Exactly. You could include a, a, a part of that touchscreen with valedictorians and salutatorians as we continue to take up the trophy case out here. You know, those things could be put in there. Use it, there's so many different areas that those things could go in also. And like she said, not necessarily create a Hall of Fame, but create additional ways to recognize, to honor, to, you know, take into those aspects of, you know, including some of those type of things in the projects like this. Where, where did it go?
That's a bright asset.
That's, yeah.
Okay.
So as you come through the commons area, you kind of turn left to go into the gym. That would be on the wall on your right hand side across from the concession stand. Kind of the back of the teacher work room and right before the brown doors.
So if approved to move forward tonight, Jason and the people continue work, they've also shared with coaches, the student leadership teams group. But I'm hearing you say, I do, because this was me, that we want to unify our font as much as possible. And perhaps using other musical themes for the music area for that hallway and that, right? So we'll make sure to change that up if that makes sense. And like I said, all hung out and for sure.
No comic sans. No comic sans.
I'm a block font guy and that's kind of how I, I like to go. So I would make sure it wouldn't be comments.
So we're going to hear you say that we need to do a motion to move forward so that we can get it with him.
Maybe have that motion for a contract with them or approve his quote?
I would say a contract right now because the quote may adjust because literally we got this at 11:09 and we needed an estimate for everything we talked about, which is we are even in these pictures. There's more. And so I would say to engage with him and not to, obviously, we know what we have budgeted, not to exceed the budget. But we are going a little slower just so that we can make sure the important parts is where all the rhythm goes, yeah.
I moved it through the contract entering with more design gear for commons branding at the school.
Second.
Division second and a contract, yay.
Yay.
Yeah.
Yay.
Yeah.
Yay.
She is good.
Thank you.
Jason, as the project goes on, will you provide?
Absolutely.
The real pictures?
Yeah, as, as we continue to adjust things and even as we start to get into those conversations, you know, with the gym and with.
Right.
He's walked in those spaces. We've talked about different things, but there's no renderings for those spaces either. So, yeah, absolutely.
Fair enough. And one of the things I appreciated with meeting with him is he said, but what I believe is our gym in and of itself is branding. It's so unique. It has less is more in that space. And some of the gyms you go into are really cool, but they have so much going on. And he was very adamant that he didn't want so much going on to take away from the unique sense of the gym.
Well, and you mentioned it too, you know, when he came here last week, we're dealing with the owner of the company. And, you know, he's the one giving us these ideas and going through us and not, you know, a sales rep or somebody who he just sent down there. Like I said, one of the companies didn't even bother to come down. We did everything via Zoom and I had to send them pictures and dimensions and it just, it made me feel good kind of working with, you know, somebody who took the time to come and meet with us himself.
Or are they out of?
Um, Muncie.
You know, we're back on technology?
Technology.
Well, as you all probably know, summertime is kind of when we do a lot of our renewals for software subscriptions, hardware projects, things like that. So had a lot going on, obviously June and July now. So appreciate Casey and Heidi and keeping up with all my purchase order requests. So with all those things, a lot of things came in relatively close to what we budgeted for, what we thought were going to be. Around that, those prices. Couple of things were a little high. One thing was really high, so I had to talk them down to get, just so it was a little high. But one thing that was really, we were looking at this year was an optional in our budget was to, to replace our Palo Alto firewall appliances that we bought five years ago. So five years ago, we purchased two of those and we purchased, at the time it was three years of their security services and their support subscriptions. At that time, that whole total cost was $36,000. Did you ever take? Yeah, it's very expensive. They are top of the line firewall. So we did, I think that was the right thing at that time.
Yeah, just from that power school breach.
Yes, it did help with that for sure. And countless other things that we don't even probably know about that just stopped it without even, without even being notified or seeing it. But so after three years, we've been doing one year renewals on just the subscription stuff for like support and security subscriptions. So each year it was still pretty pricey, almost 16,000 just for a one year renewal for just those things. So this year, when it came five years, that's when we usually start looking at hardware replacements because things start dying after that. Amount of time as far as electronics. And then by that time also things are, there's a lot more updated things that just work better. So decided to look into what would cost to get new appliances along with other different terms as far as subscription and things like that. So it looks like Palo Alto is doing some different licensing this year. They kind of changed up their model a little bit, did some bundling or whatever they call it. So we went ahead and were able to purchase two new appliances this year. They do two appliances for high availability. So if one fails, it fails over to the, the next one and keeps going. Well, you can get the other one repaired or whatever. So you don't just totally, the firewall is kind of, if it goes down, they're kind of just dead in the water until you get one running or you. Or you get something else or whatever, I don't know. But it's just kind of a very important piece of hardware, obviously. So we did that. We were able to get a five year security bundle. Two new appliances that were a lot better performance than what we have now. And that total cost for a five year package with two appliances was around $19,000, so.
If that was supposed to build up.
Yeah, it's like we were going to pay 16 just for one year and another renewal, just with the old appliances that we just kept doing that. So we thought that was something we should probably jump on, so.
Thank you, thank you.
We did that. So we should be set five years for the firewall. So those were, like I said, top of the line, next generation firewalls. So we're happy with that. Power School, we rolled that over yesterday. We're working on finishing up the online registration forms. We're planning on opening the registration on July 29th. That's about a week later than we normally do for in previous years. We did some, mixed changes on the new student form. We're going to make the same changes on the, the returning student forms as far as contacts go. Power School changed up their, the way they do contact management for, for student contacts. So they've been doing it for a few years. We've just kind of not switched over yet. So we made the decision this year to kind of switch that over and go with a new system. It was a little tricky to get used to for some of the secretaries, but I think we're all kind of on the same page now. And it's all going to be better in the, in the long run. So we're happy with that. Just kind of, I know there's some parents here with students here. So when you're filling out the registration form, make sure you're following the directions and especially on the contacts page and make sure everything's looks good there. Because that's pretty important as far as the smart tag for the bus, the transportation stuff. And also also school messenger and alerts and things like that. So definitely be extra careful this year when you're going through that to make sure everything looks okay.
And we're, and Katrina, we're working on some really specific messaging here and talking about that and some support, you know, those kinds of things.
Yeah.
Being put out as well.
Yes.
We're just waiting a little later than normal since we're not opening until 29th.
Yes, that's kind of the plan too. It was secretary will be back in the building on the 29th and then it will be, there's always a lot of parents that have trouble getting into their accounts and stuff like that. So with a lot of secretaries here in each building, they can help parents get logged into their accounts so they can finish the registration step, so. That's about what I have.
Anybody have any questions or anything? We're here, we have. Appreciate Kenny being here tonight too. He's already got some other videos underway.
Next on the agenda is safety and security.
The safety grant has been submitted. Just leave it as fingers are crossed, but we're not holding our breath on getting what we asked for. Like I said before, nine million dollars more we asked for last year from the schools and what they had to give out. So we didn't even get our full first ask, so now we just have one ask, hoping that we get all that to go towards the SRO pay. And deal with everything else, everything else ourselves. Smart tag, the renewal quote was in your packet today and it might go down. We'll end up getting credit because there's one part in there that we are not using. So I'm going to discuss with them about, we only paid for it, I'm using it, just credit for next year.
We have a middle quote in here.
She's going to leave it in, she'll take it out there.
I don't.
Because she said it'd be easier just to pay it.
Oh, we, it's in the place, right. Okay, right. We didn't pull the quote out, it's just we paid it, yes.
Yeah, so we might be getting credit on some of that.
Right, we might, but we wanted to pay them, yeah.
And then with the staff badges, going to go reprint it and smart tag, giving the kindergartners and new students reprint it by them. And getting this stuff where I'm looking at reps that my red use for this and that and Pride Day deals and a smart tag website for certain things we have to get from them. But to get the best price possible, we'll get that ordered this week and everything, so it's ready to go. It's going to take a little bit longer than I anticipated for the staff badges because that printer, you stick one badge in, the printer, you pull it out, you stick the next badge in, it tells the brand. But we'll get through it. Everybody's own badge will work until I turn it off. And I would turn it off until I can do one handed to them. So it'll still get in the building unless we don't want it to. I'm going to start working on updating the maps because every map in, in the high school has the podcast room, which is no longer there with the room number. So I'll just chip away at a room at a time. And then also the K8, we need to add the multipurpose room to it, which is off to the side because it doesn't fit where it's connected to the building on the map. And I don't want to shrink the map, so that secretaries might be able to see the, the room numbers. And then we're working with our relocation sites to get our maps updated where we can and cannot go within our building. I have all the office lady secretary laptops that they use. And we're going to get them connected to those WiFi's and get it set up. So if we ever have to go there again, they're ready to go, they log in, it's all connected. It will speed up the process of parents coming because we'll know they'll be beating down the door and wanting to get your kids. And we're not going to open the doors until we're ready to go. We've got a paper ready to send out at that time if you need to do this. Which also goes along with Power School contacts. So if you're not the custodial parent or in contact in Power School, you will not pick up your kid. If we ever have to relocate or do something like that again, that's where we, we drew the line. I'm going to be able to show up, have to show an ID to be able to pick them up. And we've got kind of a flow map where you'll get all that kind of stuff. And then I'm just kind of trying to find some other grants that could be used for specific safety purposes that could help with some things. We got some cameras that are getting a little outdated. We had a little extra money in the safety grant after COVID and bought a lot of cameras, but also means now they're all going to go out and get outdated at the same time. And there's some other grants that are just kind of general grants that could be used for safety. That can save money for other things throughout school and more butter mugs outdoors and stuff like that.
Thank you. Thanks for all your orchestrating of putting things together in the right time. I appreciate it.
And then some agenda is the property tax review.
So that you have in your packet. I'll let Heidi talk a little bit about that. Not really much to say, but.
Okay, um, let me pull it up here. So you can see that we got our spring tax advance rolls kindly, like we always ask for. And collecting about 50, a little over 50% for that first. And we'll get the other ones in here for the fall.
We can spend it, right?
Yeah.
We are.
Thank you, Heidi.
You're welcome.
Uh, next is extracurricular accounts review.
So we put these in every six months. And this has the extracurricular account prepared by Amber and reviewed by Heidi. So if there's any questions, we'll be happy to talk about those. These are things that we also submit. Review, her review as well, Gateway.
Do you need to have approval that we received them right there?
It may be a minute.
So do you have any questions? Yep, we already did the sanitary project update, so we're on to new business. Approval of a superintendent contract through June 30th of 2026. We need to approve the contract for that, don't we?
That's what the law says.
Insurance evaluation. Kind of have a tuckles somewhere.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. So this is our part that we approved her contract for another year through June 30th of 2026. for another year to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. Do you have any special minute with things in the minutes? How fantastic you are.
Speechless.
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 And at this time, as a board, we're not going to, since we haven't gone through negotiations or anything, we're not going to add anything to the contract at this time.
Thank you.
Because we have reason to. We appreciate your hard work. And we're gonna be done, we'd really like you to have a second session.
We'd be happy to do that.
I need a motion to approve in a second.
Will they approve the contract through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six?
Spin a motion in a second to approve a superintendent contract through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Here we go. Oh.
Yay.
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 Yay. Motion is carried. Next, can we take this off to your joint?
I have a motion there.
It has to. Are you gonna read that or like? No, it comes from you, so you need to. She's presenting a retirement of superintendent effective on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. Should we agree? Should we just read it? I'm trying that. It's just, this is more about today than it is. It's tremendously mixed emotions that I've decided to make the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. My last as superintendent here at South Adams. I did not make this decision lightly and after lots of prayer. I was to get through to me that I might want to retire and have more flexibility to spend with my family. Being a part of this incredible school family over the years has been priceless. To say this place feels like home is an understatement. I'm so very thankful to have this upcoming school year to cherish every single moment. I want to say a special thank you to you as a school board for trusting me with this role. You're truly a example for school boards everywhere because you put children first and care so much. And there's, it's just so rare to have a group assembled like you guys. I also wanted to thank the entire Starfire community, school family, because there is no place like South Adams. There's not been a day that I didn't feel completely blessed to call this place home. And that's really hard to explain, but. So thank you. Again, though, how much I appreciate it and treasure each moment here at South Adams and it's been one of the most incredible honors of my life to get to serve this amazing school and this entire Starfire community. Thank you, thank them for your trust in me so well. We're all. So June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, you will have been here six and a half years. And that's even rare for to have a superintendent in eight years. And our community has been blessed by your service, growing of love and creating a team and family at South Adams. And with that being said, we'll accept your retirement here in a minute. With that being said, board does not want to, we want to be transparent that this next year will be transitional time and we ask Joe Meyer to be our next superintendent. So there'll be more updates on that unless Joe has a speech.
He has a speech too.
That's something just short and brief all podium. You know, I have to echo, Michelle's right. You know, South Adams is its family, its home. It's a special place. And you know, there's a term, and I know Michelle would, she's gonna be mad if you're saying this, but there's a term that, you know, I've heard it's standing on the shoulders of giants. And I'll get that opportunity next year to learn from one of the best. And I look forward to the opportunity to serve South Adams and our community. It's home. Yeah, hopefully, so thank you.
Thank you, Joe, for saying this. At this time, I would enter a motion for to accept Michelle's retirement. Here we go. I hope we all have a say now.
Remember that when Joe says quit letting him come back to visit.
I hope you're always at the door of him.
Been through a lot of superintendents. Our leanest to a few others, but I'm not saying any goddillers superintendents neither will you. You set the bar and you are reading for the right reasons. And I'm really, really grateful for that. Because that can't be an easy decision. But it's the right reasons.
So is that the motion?
Yeah, you know, we'll sit here all night waiting for a motion, but.
Nobody wants to, nobody wants to.
We, we.
We take a lunch on our duty time.
Because of the story.
I'll second. It's for a motion second to accept Michelle's retirement.
Incredibly.
Yay.
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 Yay. Motion is carried. Thank you so much. And just we look forward to spending the all the three days with Joe Meyer as hell. We will look forward to the cyber side entering this section. Next thing on the agenda is our food service bid renewals.
In your packet, you have a memo from Abby. Then these are our contracts that are actually voted and signed out by Region A that we participate in so that we can get the best prices. And they provide this information to us and we bring it to you so you're fully aware and the approvals are also in our minutes. And we appreciate very much the work that Region A and their team does as they co-op with other areas to bring us the best prices.
I move to approve the recommended contracts for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Second.
My motion is second to approve the food service renewals here, okay? Yay.
Yay. Yay.
Okay. Motion is carried. Next is the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six lunch prices.
Yeah, so there's no increase, that's in your packet as well, but we still do need approval to state sentences as our lunch prices. Since we have a balance, we won't have an increase by this year yet.
Make a motion to not increase our prices for meals here in school.
Okay. My motion is second, not to increase our twenty-two, twenty-three prices.
Yay.
Second.
Hey.
Yay. Yay.
Motion is carried. Next is the cell phone allowance.
So we did have, this might feel like, didn't we just do this? We, when Jason came on as our techno, as our facilities director, main facilities, we added them to it. And so, so we don't have to do that anymore, this is just a physician, these are physicians and this is the annual approval that we do. So this way, if we would change someone in one of these roles, they would automatically be approved since the physician is approved. And we'll continue to just approve physicians year after year instead of the names of people like the past.
Seems like we have the same discussion every year and it's $30 every year. Is that still enough?
I have, there's some inquiries and some people have said, well, actually my cellphone bill has been, is better now than it used to be in some ways. It is only probably about a quarter of their cost of their cellphone. So the way we use that, they use, we use that all the time, we do. We use our cell phones, our emails on our cell phones are, helps us to stay as communication easier and quicker. But I know everyone also uses it very personally and wouldn't have it, wouldn't not have it either. So I think the conversation is, is it a hardship to have the cellphone bill when they need it for? And I think most people would say, I would have cellphone anyway. If the board would wish to raise that, I'm sure more would argue about it, but, and it has stayed the same.
Well, that's not a question of, I'm arguing for why, is it enough? Now, do you think we can't come around the same thing over here and have the same conversation?
You know what we can do, you could ask, I can ask around what other districts reverse. See how that works, so many districts put it in. I think it's somewhere, I can check. I think the main difference is if it's in your salary or if you have to turn in. So our team has to turn in their bills and make copies and then get reversed. So that's a little bit of a burden, but if they didn't do that, it would be a taxable payment to them, maybe where they pay taxes, so they get a little bit more, they get a little bit more markings, that's how that works.
So is everybody on the same network?
Whatever they're.
Whatever.
Yeah, it's a personal cellphone, provide them to, so that you can require them to use it for more things.
I don't think we have to table it or anything, but maybe next year we can just see what other schools are doing, see for a while.
Do most schools do an allowance type system or do they provide it?
Well, they provide a phone, and we had that discussion a long time ago. I remember when the cell phones came in to here, they were wearing two different cell phones on their bodies and it was frustrating to them not to do something if they could just have one.
It's not so large a cost to administer.
There's also a thing with these providing a device. If you agree to use it for only work purposes, you're not taxed as income, but if you want to use it for personal use, taxed as income. So it's much easier, cleaner to do it this way.
So we would just need an approval for these physicians to continue to have cellphone reimbursement for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And if we would see a need for an additional physician, we would bring that additional physician back.
Good. I'm like a motion to approve the cellphone allowance, that's for second.
My motion is second for the cellphone allowance.
Yay. Yay.
Yay. Motion is carried. Next is permission to hire.
So every year at this time, I ask the board to grant me permission to hire because of the way the start of school is. And our first teacher day is August eleventh and our board meeting is until the twelfth. So if we would need to hire someone between now and then, that would give us, we get the permission to do that and then bring it to the board at the office about four. Does take a motion for four minutes.
Make a motion to grant you permission to hire any open spots.
Second. My motion is second to give Michelle permission to hire, here we go.
Yay.
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 Motion is carried. Next is obsolete equipment.
So Jason asked to have the old golf cart declared obsolete. That's the golf cart primarily used by Becky, but we also have used her further fleet. And he must be able to sell that and put the money towards a new one. And he has budgeted in his athletic funds, so dollars for a new one. But in order to do that, he has to have it declared obsolete. Do you want a brand, brand new one or a used one?
We've already, the sports boosters, we're gonna split the bill for this and so we've already gone to even, we're gonna start up looking at options. Right now, we have one that's two thousand and nineteen that I think we'll probably kind of go ahead and purchase it when we get to that point. So it won't be brand new, but it'll be a lot better than what we have.
I move to declare the current athletic golf cart obsolete. Second.
My motion is second to have the golf cart obsolete.
Yay.
Okay.
Yay.
Motion is carried. Now the donation.
Yeah, so in here, Arlene and I had met and I said, this is the first time I think we'd ever had a donation not from the community and then two hours later, we get this. And so the first one I want to talk about is Decatur Volunteer Fire Department, which paid ten thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars in twenty-six. So I said, there's not enough information for me here. That's a huge and generous, overly generous donation to our fire rescue program. So Tony Heiser, who is our amazing teacher in that program, he explained to me that Decatur Volunteer Fire Department usually provides a donation to the burn camp. I have it here, so I don't forget anything, to the Hoosier Burn Camp. But this year, they, what they were raising, they asked for volunteers to help and our kids went out and helped and the conversation got started. Could we give some of this, this money we're raising to your program? Would you, would it all go to your program? And so Tony inquired, and yes, any money, we had that conversation a long ways, by the kids are donated to the kids, goes directly to that program. And so they provide, are providing this amount of money to our fire rescue program. So.
It's awesome.
Tony was completely flabbergasted, so we're very thankful for that. To get along with the fire department, for our kids, for putting the time in. Certainly, that program is so well-supported by all of our area fire departments. We're very grateful, it makes all the difference in the world. So we do need, you know, to have that approved as a donation. And then the other ones are burnout furniture, DJ's flooring. We're donating a hundred and two hundred dollars respectively to high school for the summer basketball tournament for girls. And then we also have in your packet teachers who have a choice of giving a star polisher as they retire or having a donation. And so the teachers in your packet chose the donation and Carol is donating her sixty-five dollars to the robotics club. And Margie Leakey is donating to Camp Reasonwell for hers. And Sammy's Runner is also donating to Camp Reasonwell. And then finally.
Donating to the, I don't understand. This school doesn't own Camp Reasonwell, isn't it?
Well, they're donating to the trip.
To the trip.
Yes. Yeah, the fifth grade trip, yes. And a lot of, lot of fundraising goes into that. Sammy's gonna continue to go, she says. And make sure who drives the bus so she can go, so she's got an old plan. Yeah, so she doesn't want us out on that. And then Hallware Development LLC donated a hundred dollars to our color guard for equipment. And that is the extent of our donations. So again, we have every other month, every election, election.
I move to accept donations as per number. Second.
My motion is second to accept the donations, excuse me.
Yay. Yay.
Motion is carried. Other. Other.
I don't have any other except we're gonna be in the Swiss Days Parade because Cory insisted. We will not be having a booth this year. We did try that out last year, but, so we're gonna be sending out an email as soon as I get all the details about the Swiss Days Parade. For any school person and leading board members who might want to walk in the parade. And the kids love it. It's the perfect start to the school year, really, to get to see everybody. And so it is very nice. So we'll be doing that. Registration will be happening. You know, it does seem like, we talked today in our office, it seems like we just had our last day of school and we're just about to start our first one. And it's even a little bit of a later start date this year. So, so much going on. But, so Swiss Days Parade coming up quick and I'll be sending an email with that for anybody, or maybe Cory or a descendant who's excited. That's all I have. And also to please, remember to just keep the Ralph family and all of our community and our kiddos in the prayers. And just unity and protection and peace.
Next on the agenda is guess what the board? Anybody have something they'd like to offer? Yeah, we asked. Next on the agenda is a German. I was gonna say something. Motion is second for German.
Yay.
Yeah. Yay.
Yay. Motion is carried. Thank you for coming tonight.